I'm ready. It's unmuted, okay. This is a joint work session between the Culver Redevelopment Commission and Culver Town Council members. I was called by the CRC so discuss basically the out Main Street housing development. I just want to remind everybody or let everybody know that it's being recorded and if you speak then you're acknowledging permission to be taped recorded and for it to be replayed on the town's YouTube website. And if you've got any cell phones, which everybody does, please mute them. Brooke, I think you're basically, you know,
Basically, sure.
Basically, so you can let us know what all
Yeah, absolutely.
is in store.
So if anybody who doesn't know me, my name is Brooke Richardson. I'm in-house counsel for Alan and Chris Collins and I kind of help to manage all their in-house issues that come from development to gun shops and cigar shops and tanning companies and all kinds of different things. And my main function is to help with the real estate development side of their businesses. And I've been in front of this board or other boards for Culver in regards to this toy barn storage units that are out on South Main Street off Tamarack. And so part of that development kind of worked with Mr. McGee and the property that he has. And there's a lot of benefits that come from working the two projects together. And a main source of that benefit is in utilities. So as we look to extend utilities out to that property on Tamarack, it works well with Mr. McGee and his desire to get involved in some housing development. And obviously Alan and Chris have been very involved in housing development, Culver and in the area over many decades. So they're always in the, in the market to help look to do that so long as the environment's right to, to produce what the town needs. So what we're looking at on Mr. McGee's properties, about sixty-six acres total, about four parcels, would be all four of the Collinses products in that one space. Those four products are single-family houses like you have at Maple Ridge or other developments, if you've seen those, in Warsaw, Columbia City, Elwood, Indiana. So the single-family houses, traditional three-story apartment buildings that would have one bedroom, one bath, or two bedroom, two bath units. We have patio flat apartments that are in series of eight or six or twelve, kind of extend those however far we have a level enough of grounds which have, they're all single-story units with one car garages and they could be one bed or two bedrooms, one bath or two bedrooms, two bath. Those are very popular to see those on Plum Street in Culver. They're also in the Centennial Crossing. And then we would have a senior building. So looking at one senior building for this property and the senior building is kind of designated for seniors to have an apartment, but then also a joint living space where there's a meeting area with a kitchen, all kinds of meeting spaces, both outside and inside. There's raised gardens, there's a full kitchen, there's a community washer and dryer space, there's a washer and dryer in each unit as well, a full kitchen in each unit. And those units are one bedroom, one bath, two bedrooms, two bath. All four of those products and Alan is really working on looking at along the, we're in the very beginning portions of a design phase with engineers, but looking at kind of the normal, the natural topography of the land kind of lends itself. The water's already flowing that direction. That's where we want the water and those types of things to go. But looking at some town complexes as well, so it'd be two-story, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath duplex style townhomes that we think will be really, really popular. We've seen the popularity at Centennial Crossing of those walkout basement, I'm sorry, including a walkout basement, townhomes along or houses along that water area. So looking out over the natural environment and that water retention, water detention, retention area, we've seen those be very, very popular in Centennial Crossing. I think those will continue to be popular here. We're looking at developing anything from the, for sale from the $200,000 home to the $500,000 home on a few occasions when you get some of those bigger houses. So anything from a little bit smaller than Maple Ridge to maybe a little bit bigger than Maple Ridge, kind of dealing the market out. As you're probably aware right now, building a house for anything less than about $200,000 is going to be really stretching it pretty tight. So that $200,000 house is really meant for those beginners. You know, two bedroom, two bath ranch on a crawl space type house, but still the same style and design as maybe you'd see out of Maple Ridge, just a little bit smaller. Idea would be to have single families separated off and multifamily kind of in an area together. And again, we're, we're still super in the beginning of that design phase. And as we looked at geography, Wade's been with us and kind of looked at maybe what would work in certain spaces and maybe redesigning based upon the, the topography and we think we're getting close. And we're looking at between 110 to 150 units total between the multifamily and single family homes. We probably have a small clubhouse there. If you've been to Centennial Crossing, probably nothing like we have there that's that big. Just trying to really focus on using the grounds. There's so much to do in Culver already. There's no need to have a big swimming pool and all kinds of stuff. It'd be more of a centralized meeting area with a rental office and things located somewhere on the development, but nothing overly big taking up a bunch of space, so.
On that retention pond that you were talking about, can you kind of explain to these people where that's probably going to be located?
Where the trees are. When you kind of look at it now, if you look at it from GIS, you can see kind of along, oh, is there any, those aren't really a map. So on GIS. So on GIS here, you can see it's just naturally where the water flows into these smaller areas. There's already a tree line here that runs kind of along in front of where the Eagle Check Building was and then south a little ways. It's just a natural area and obviously we would have the so it's just right here where all those trees are kind of growing now if you drive by and and that's, I mean, where the water's already flowing. If you go a little bit south of there, there's a ridge kind of that runs down the middle and then there's another, almost just south of west shore, there's another collection of, of trees. And there's a natural area there as well, but we might have to build something to kind of hold that back as a reservoir because it kind of extends onto another another parcel. So unless that parcel owner decides to get involved right here, get involved, we would have to kind of build a structure there, which is not a problem. But it's just kind of the idea of letting the land distribute the water as it naturally will. And off of our estimations with hard surface and housing with those areas, we've got a lot of water retention areas that naturally, we think it kind of holds it naturally, percolates down. There's some studies that have to be done to make sure that that happens, but that's our planning so far. It's just to continue those natural areas and not disturb those any more than necessary because again, that's attractive to the people who want to buy houses that may be right along those areas.
Actually, the houses will be built on, you're talking about the single-family house like Maple Ridge.
Sure.
Does that title to the property go with condominium type of situation?
At this point, we're, we're willing and trying to kind of look at if we want to do that horizontal property regime and put in the condominium style ownership. We really just have to decide if we want to do the subdivision route or if we want to do the, the horizontal property regime with the plan needed development. I, I think that you know, the way Alan has operated over his fifty years, he kind of says, well, why can't I just promise to make these things and then just build it the way that fits the land the best? And it's like, well, it takes a lot of trust from the community to just give you the keys to that. And he said, yeah, but I've always done it. It's like, well, the law doesn't really have that third avenue. So we're probably looking more towards that plan unit development. And the only problems that you run into with the plan needed development is you have to really say where everything's going to be. And sometimes as you start to build and the environment changes as far as sales or rentals, well, maybe you want to build a little bit bigger house than what you put there because people want to buy a bigger house, but you can't do that now. You have to go back and change the DUD. So there's a process to go through, which we can. And that's just, that's the only part that frustrates Alan is not from a standpoint of wanting to have control, but to wanting to have flexibility to provide what the community needs. And if the community needs more smaller houses than what are on the design, then you have to change that. At Centennial, we're in the process of, we find that we really need two bedroom, two bar, two bedroom, two bath apartments. So we've got to change the PUD to fit the, the housing that we need to make some new footprint. So it's kind of up in the air, but I would lean more towards the PUD horizontal property regime process of having HOA. And then everybody, or you know, the, the HOA fee to go in to manage that. But again, with the limited amount of public property that would be there, there's not going to be a swimming pool or major amount of infrastructure that that HOA has to care for. Probably the biggest part would be the irrigation system and some of those things. The fee could help to kind of be kept down a little bit. You know, Maple Ridge, they're $125 a month right now. And that's you know, pushing it, but that's where they are as of now. And those fees maybe go up in this new development a little bit. But we don't want to, we don't have the need to charge people a whole bunch of money, three hundred and four, all those crazy fees.
You have, some may have three bedrooms, like Corinne Ellis has got two bedrooms, two baths.
No. So you might have some one and a half, single-family homes on a crawl space that have two bedrooms up, one down. I don't think that you're looking at anything more than a three-bedroom home for the most part. But if you have a three-bedroom home that's one and a half or two stories with a finished basement, that price point could get kind of hot. I know that as we've learned a lot in going through Centennial and the sizes of the, we have twelve different models in Centennial. So there's a house for everybody who might need a house there. And obviously we had to go through the process of designing those houses for the PUD. So we know exactly what house is going to go in what location. And as we go through this process, if we do a PUD, everybody would be informed of what that design looks like and it's all part of the recording. But there is some knowledge that was gained in, you know, making this model a little bit bigger here, a little bit bigger there so that it fits the needs of what we think the purchasers are looking for. Kind of what we did in Centennial was we said that we would have a minimum separation between houses of X number of feet. So foundation, the foundation was eighteen feet. And then we put everything in according to that. And then so you have a thirty-two foot wide house here, then you have that up thirty-six or thirty, you know, depending upon what fit within those distances. I think that with the amount of space we have here, we only had thirty-some acres and, so I'm at thirty-four acres. Now we've got the opportunity to maybe spread that out a little bit and have a little bit more distance. So that allows us to have a little bit broader footprint for those houses that we thought this is a great plan, but maybe need two feet here, four feet to make it a little bit, a little bit nicer.
Any other commercial space in this besides the apartment?
No, so we know. Right, yeah. So it'd be no multi, at, at this point, we don't have any design that has to be multipurpose facilities as far as the storage spaces would be the only one. But again, that's separate.
No.
Yeah, yeah. So there are no, no storage space on this other than, you know, the garages which people use as storage.
Brooke, what about the hundred and fifty units? You know, my first question, if you could do this in phases?
Well, we've really learned a lot over the past five or six years. And the, the lesson has been, we wish that phase one had been bigger because you end up doing phase two almost immediately. And then you have to go back through the financing process and it slows things down. If we had had a bigger phase one, for instance, in Columbia City, they leased ninety-seven units in forty-six days and filled it and already had committed the work to another location and then had to come back to Columbia City to do a phase two. So phase one can be as big as we necessarily, the corollary comes into play with the community and say that the community is able to assist in the cost of infrastructure development at a higher level, the higher, the bigger phase one can be. So if we can share the cost of the infrastructure and those types of things to extend that phase one, then Alan and Chris can bring in the support to build that out. So if it was up to Alan, I mean, in Centennial, we basically had one phase, continued work non-stop to build the whole thing out. So if, if the community is willing to participate in the way that we've kind of talked about, then we can build all the infrastructure. And Centennial, you're looking on thirty-four acres, you're looking at four point three million dollars and the community chipped in about two point five through TIF funds. So that helps kind of also. Plus that is just getting more and more expensive now in this environment, but we're hopeful that, you know, that'll come down.
How much was that number from there? Two point five, did you say is what they covered?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Just under two point five. It was, the fees and stuff's a little over that, but the actual funds generated to developers just under two point five. And so that all went in there to the, the infrastructure and much more, but it still managed to all pencil out. So that question of how big will it be in phases, yes, it could be. Alan kind of talked about being around for the next twelve to thirty-six months, depending on the community's temperature on what the development. In this small area, if you want to sell a house for $200,000 in rural Indiana, you got to have help from the, the community to help put in that infrastructure to do that. There's just no way to meet that price point without that assistance. And again, it's all assistance that's going to be generated for the benefit of the development.
About what percentage is going to be well?
Alan hasn't necessarily said a percentage. And even in Centennial, we talked about twenty-four rentals and thirty-six or thirty-four sold or thirty-four rentals, twenty-four sold, you know, kind of flip flop back and forth around there and just kind of just measured the environment, see what, what, what they, what the town needed. And, you know, we've kind of built out everything as fast as we can. And if it leases, it leases, if it sells, it sells and keep track of the numbers. But I think all the houses that have certificate of occupancies are either rented or sold as of now. So since they're done, they're occupied pretty quickly.
What about your apartments and so forth?
How are they doing?
I imagine they're doing well up there, but I mean, down here, what do you look at price points on those, on the apartments?
On, on the, on the senior buildings, they're always looking in the six ninety-five to seven ninety-five area. And Alan's really worked hard to keep the price point for that there based upon the senior social security income. You know, this is priced for that person that's just, has just a little bit too much income for assisted living, assistance, assisted, but assistance on the, on the, on the payment. And, you know, not extending higher than what a, a senior on that social security income would be able to afford. On your patio flat apartments, you're right around the nine hundred, the eleven hundred dollar range for those with the garage and all that. On the three-building apartments, those are anywhere between seven fifty and a thousand dollars, that range. So again, none of this is assisted living, so or rent assisted. So, you know, that's kind of the market rate. And that's all, you know, we work from the other direction than most developers work. So we work from what the rent we think can generate down and what we can afford to build it. And if you can't afford to build it and get that rent, then you don't build it. A lot of people will say, here's what it costs to build it. And so here's what the rent's going to be. That's a recipe for disaster, as you've seen. So rather than work in the dangerous direction, we're working the other way down. So and we're always looking at a development that's got about a sixty percent loan to value ratio. So we're very, very low risk. Don't want to get in a situation where you get halfway through a project and the economics change. And so now you sit with it dry. By having that, that loan to value ratio really keeps us a lot more a lot more capable of completing out a project and avoiding the fluctuations of the economy. And the rental business is getting better and better. Right now, they're actually having some houses rented at Centennial for sixteen fifty a month. And people are signing the leases and paying the rents. So the rental business is very good right now. The sale business, we'll see how inflation goes and what interest rates do and see how that affects sales. But, you know, that just, the rental pool just stays strong even in those types of environments. So we're confident on, we're beginning a project in Peru and just completed a, a appraisal of that and got to that sixty percent loan to value ratio based upon what we need to borrow to build it and what we think it'll be worth once completed and filled out. So our numbers are still staying strong, even in this environment. Peru is an assessment or a valuation that was done about two years after Centennial. Then those two years of COVID and all that stuff. And so even in today's environment, that business model is still staying pretty strong. Which is a testament to Alan, Chris's vertical integration of their business and owning from shovels to electricians and all the way through. That helps to avoid the fluctuations quite a bit. Think your cost to our investor group and things, so the cost per square foot in the heyday of Columbia City and things was sixty-nine to seventy dollars a square foot. We may be somewhere in the eighty dollars a square foot now, so. Square footage over thousands and hundreds of thousands of square feet, it gets expensive. You're looking at it right now for just the housing development, somewhere between a ten and fifteen million dollar project. And Culver plus one point five to two million in the toy barn.
So Brooke, first of all, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Informative. That I talk to in the real estate business here will consistently say, we need all kinds of houses.
Right.
There isn't any kind that we don't need.
We've got plenty of that.
That won't sell, right? And so my, my personal inclination is, you know, to be more supportive of something that would of housing that would gain us full-time residents as opposed to a apartment. So when you say, well, you know, we're going to do this depending upon what the community wants, I mean, the community wants everything. So
Right.
Kind of, I'm, I'm interested in any kind of finer point you can put out.
Yeah. I, I think what what Alan and Chris are motivated to do is look at how to provide housing for all those people you see driving in on ten. But also recognize that there's a market that helps to pay for that $200,000 house. Maybe if your mark is a little bit lower there on your return, well, that other, you know, you always have in Culver at the end of that market for the $500,000 house. But they know that the community needs that entry-level type housing or, you know, somewhere in that two hundred, two twenty, two fifty range. And you need a number of them to help avoid people living in all the other towns and driving into town in the morning. And they want to provide that market for those people who work here, to live here as well. So that's important. But they're also going to keep an eye out to say that there's an opportunity for some of these places and these locations, I mean, they have investors and people to take care of as well, to say there is a market for this $400,000 house. And that market can be, can benefit the community in that valuation. So there's something to also consider there and say, we can't build every house for as cheap as we can possibly build it and just deny that this market exists. And maybe some of that help for permanent residents can be provided in the apartments. And maybe you have people who rent apartments and then buy a house or transition through the community, however that may be. So many of the products are useful for so many different demographics. So you might have someone who's in a patio flat apartment and then moves into senior building over a number of years. We've had that in Columbia City and things where people just transition from one style of housing to the next. And, you know, when you look at Culver, it wouldn't be wise to come to Culver and build a hundred and fifty apartments. Culver probably can't support a hundred and fifty apartments. I don't know if it'd be wise to come into Culver and build a hundred and fifty houses, you know, it's just not. When you build all four of these styles products, then you really tap into a smaller market in any community, really. And you fill up the apartment, you fill up the whole development in forty-seven days because you've accessed all those areas of the, of the market in the area. So our concern isn't, when we go to a community, isn't necessarily, isn't going to be successful. It's, are we close enough to the other community that we're going to have a problem? You know, Warsaw, Columbia City, those are getting close together. Bremen and Clement, those are kind of close together. Is the market big enough in those two areas that they're going to cross over? We know just from experience so far, and hopefully things continue, all the signs say that they will, that, you know, by building these four projects in Culver, they're all going to fill out. But it may not fill out if you build a hundred and fifty houses. We built a hundred and fifty senior units, probably not going to fill those. All four can provide for that question that you have about, you got an array of people who want to All four can provide for that question that you have about, you got an array of people who want to live here and their incomes. How do we fulfill all those? You got to build all the, all the types.
I appreciate your sensitivity.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, it's, there's the business side of it and then the rational side of it. And what benefits the community, and some people may not think so, but that's a big part of Alan and Chris's businesses. We're happy to go to communities that are happy to have us because that works a lot easier than, you know, we could go to Mishawaka and try and build billion-dollar homes on 30 acres. But it's much easier to come to communities that are happy to have you and build something this community needs and everybody's happy about.
Before Waze property, even in the discussion as far as. On the mobile, for the motor home storage facility.
Yeah.
I believe you were working on some infrastructure. Without, right, utilities connecting Main Street to North End.
Our desire was to look at that and find a way for us to do what's called a conditional expenditure agreement. Where we promised to build an infrastructure that would develop a certain amount of tax base. And then we would split that tax base with the community so that the CRC receives some funds immediately as opposed to an TIF. All of it goes towards the bond. As we did that analysis, we looked at the cost to extend from where the infrastructure is now out to that development. And the revenue, the tax base that was going to be developed by that was going to basically be the total amount. If you had a $2 million valuation at a 2% cap, you're looking at $400,000 and it was going to use all that. So there was, we were concerned with that. And that's where Mr. McGee said, hey, you know, we've been talking. We've been talking with Alan for several years and we just got to get together and figure out the logistics of everything. And by bringing this on, that helps solve that problem. You know, I was working with Ms. Monroe and said, yeah, well, we want to have some left. But with the location and depth and where, you know, where it is in the middle of the road and the requirements to get it out there. It's going to be a cost that's just not going to have any run over from the tax base that's generated from the development. And so looking at this ability to bring on this project, we can route it in a different direction. Make it not so deep so it kind of frees up some of the cost. And develop a whole bunch of real estate for Culver and then extend it out, making the toy barn area kind of just a benefit to the community and extending it out, the utilities out that. And the cost really be covered, hopefully many times over by the residential development.
Explain that Warren Lehman's term.
Sure. So, so we were building, we were looking at building the toy barn development at the high end of an assessed value of $2 million. And that's only a 2%. But at great, we're going to develop, we're going to generate a certain amount of. By doing a 15 million, $10 million project, that 2% much, 2% of 10 million is much more than 2% of 2 million. So in the 10 or 15 million dollar project, you now have a lot larger tax base to draw from to reach an agreement with the community on a conditional expenditure agreement.
Well, that's what I want to know. I mean, dummy down the conditional.
Conditional expenditure agreement, right.
Kind of like a bond.
It's kind of like a bond, but we don't have near as many expenses. So we just did a phase two bond in Centennial Crossing that had $70,000 worth of for professional services. If we do the conditional expenditure agreement, the phase one in Centennial was $150,000. So if we do this conditional expenditure agreement like we did in Peru, Indiana, we had somewhere in the ballpark of, I think it was $40,000. So you save, you know, $100,000 in the cost of just the professional fees. And basically, it's a promise that the city promises to give us X percentage of the taxes that we pay if we build what we say we're going to build. If we don't build it, the city doesn't have to give us anything. If you do build it, then you bring in that. So like in Peru, we said, we agreed to a minimum valuation of $10 million. That's kind of a ballpark area of where we think the funds are going to be. And if we build everything out, then they've agreed to give us 70% back. We take that in a conditional expenditure agreement instead of a bond, there's no money that changes hands. It just says, when we pay the taxes in the future years, if we build that, they'll give us 70% back. We then take that to the bank and say, bank, over the next 15, 20 years.
Your collateral.
I've got this income coming in, right? Will you loan me money? And they say, yes, because it's coming from a municipality. They know the money's going to be there.
And so typically the term is it.
But Alan, you know, Alan and the construction company could choose to do it however they wanted. They might say, well, we want to do it over seven years, but we've got the agreement with the city to take it over 15. The agreement with the city is going to be whatever is required to cover the cost of the infrastructure. And Alan and Chris can choose to pay that off however fast they want. So if they want to take out the loan with the bank using the collateral and, you know, say it's $2 million over that 15 years. They then go and borrow 1.5, pay the 1.5 back in three years because that's what they choose to do. They still got the 15 years worth of revenue from the conditional expenditure agreement, which is really no benefit. Because they've had to pay the money out, it's dollar for dollar with the bank. So the two are kind of separated from each other.
And I think one reason we had talked about for the Tamara Road property. I think there's 14 years left on that TIF. It might be down to 13 now because I think when we, that was last year. So our, our thought was to create a new tips district with Mr. McGee's properties, which are in the TIF. With the exception, I think of one of the lots, it's not in the TIF, but can be added to the TIF. And then Tamara would also be, so all of those properties would be a new TIF. So you could get a full 25 years off of it. So if you did do an agreement of say 15 years at 70% or whatever the case is, you'd still have some years where you're collecting 100% of the TIF. So we wanted to lengthen the time that you could potentially make an agreement.
That was the third leg of the analysis of the conditional expenditure agreement and recouping the funds of the infrastructure. Was the amount of time that you had to collect that back. So the 14 years, if you looked at the 14 years and how much you would get in taxes, it was just really, really close.
Yeah, pretty tight unless you did 100% or.
Which is, and then no different than a bond. So, you know, in Peru, they're taking this 30% and they're putting in new pickleball courts and different things from that fund. So we can go to the community, well, you could tell the community, say, you know, this is not something that you'll generate funds from in 15 years. So you're getting funds tomorrow. And so once the property taxes are paid, so there's a little bit of a benefit there that sometimes people feel a little unsure about saying, well, you know, this development's great, but we don't get any benefit from it for 15 years. So it's just, maybe it's something that the community likes and maybe it's not. We'd rather go the traditional bond route. Either's fine. Alan and Chris have then make that decision at Centennial, they bought the bonds personally. And maybe they don't do that here, that'd be just an analysis to take at that time.
And just so you know, we did have Phil Fasenda from the CRC attorney and Jim Clevinger met with Burke to get an idea of all these types of housing that we're talking about putting on the development. Because that will affect how they arrange these properties from a TIF standpoint. So like in one case, I think we would have to designate the single-family homes as a residential TIF to be able to do some of this. So me not being an expert in all of that, connected Phil and Jim with Burke to discuss exactly what are you putting on each lot? So each parcel can be done in the TIF side of this the right way to be able to do any type of agreement.
We've also covered with Marshall County for Centennial, as we've said, that the single-family homes that are rented are separate, but they're part of a multifamily development. And so we said that the taxes generated by those rental houses should be captured for the TIF. Because even though they stand alone, they're part of a multifamily development. And they've agreed with us on that. Now, that's maybe pushing the gray of the law on where that stands, but so far I think they're with us. If it ever became an issue over this period of this next time that we're working on this development, we could do the economic development area and create that for a single, for the single-family TIF zone. That you have that economic revitalization area, which is basically the board just gets together and decides that it is one. There's no requirements other than the developments not being above a certain level in the area, which Culver doesn't have enough development to met that. If the community is already building houses, you can't then designate an area as economic revitalization area and use tax bonds. So it's complicated. But I don't think Culver falls in that because you don't have enough residential development over the past five years to bring that into issue.
Burke, I had a question for you. Centennial in Plymouth?
Yeah.
Could you, I mean, just at a high level, where do the tenants come from, you know, geographically?
Sure.
And then also, there are single-family homes for sale in that development. Where do the buyers come for, for those single-family homes?
As, as far as I've been made aware from our title companies, we've had a 50/50 divide in both renters and buyers. So, and that goes for the apartments and the houses. The 50/50 is Marshall County, half of them, Marshall County area, either living in Plymouth or Bremen, somewhere in the area and moving in, and you can, time you build something new and nice and attractive, you're going to get some people that just there from the area. But we have that, half of the, of the residents come from outside Marshall County. You know, a lot of people coming from Chicago and Illinois, those types of places, moving in. And we've seen that with all the title companies saying they're doing a lot of closing with individuals coming from the west, out of big city areas. And we've seen that to be true and to the best of my knowledge, when we've discussed the demographics of the development, has always been a 50/50 mix really of both local and out of town or out of county residents.
So and then if.
Do you get many that are coming in that have children or they?
Yeah, oh yeah. So we have a single-family housing, lots of families and the apartments and things. I can't say for certain how many, but I know that we've got all kinds of kids running around in the development as it is. Carefully with the construction equipment moving around and stuff. But, you know, we've had several families, a lot of the renters are families for the single family. But I think we've got some buyers that are families as well. We've got a large amount of empty nesters, seniors purchasing houses as well. Just wanting to get into something maybe a little bit smaller and not have to worry about mowing the lawn or anything else. And I mean, kind of like people mentioned, and have no, no work to do.
And then if you extrapolate the Centennial experience to here. The thoughts, I mean, I mean, I can see with more, with Academy employees, since it's the largest employer.
Right.
Is that a price point that would be agreeable to more of them to live in? And then also the cabinet factory, those folks have to drive.
Right.
And then that third variable is those people from outside of Marshall County.
Yeah. I think that anytime we move into a community, Alan would always do an analysis, a market analysis and kind of determine what's available in the, in the area, what's the price point that's currently being charged? What's the level of occupancy in any of those types of developments? Haven't necessarily done that for Culver just because Alan's so aware of the area and has a feel for it, maybe just based on instinct and his experience and things. But I know that what he's saying is, his analysis is, this is what's going to cost to build this just from his experience and knowledge of what all goes into the infrastructure and the materials. He knows that this is what I can basically rent these units for or sell these houses for on the cost. And if I look at the lands and look what I can develop and work with our investors and say, okay, this is what makes sense for this land and here's what that's going to generate and then work backwards. And so for a total development cost. So I think that Alan has considered, and we've all talked about the concern of having the Academy employees and they're living out of town, wanting to provide some type of housing for the Academy employees. I don't know necessarily that, a lot of discussion on the cabinet factory, but that, I mean, that's another large employer in the area. So certainly looking at that. But I think a hope too is to maybe draw people in from outside of Culver. Not just transition people from one type of housing in Culver to another type of housing in Culver. But more to draw new residents in to Culver. And that's what the Peru project is. You're going to definitely have people in Peru move into the Peru project. The idea is maybe to pull people in from outside to move into the area and bring new dollars. That's what, you know, they're motivated about is having that new move in. And I think that there's a large portion of this project that would be generated, would be focused on that new draw to the Culver area and bringing people in that live outside that maybe haven't even considered moving to Culver.
So this may be more than 50/50. This could be, just not holding you to it, just it's, it could be 60/40.
40 mix. Yeah, I mean, I, and Culver, you know, and Plymouth is kind of in a spot that makes sense to live in if you're, if you work in Warsaw. You know, because you're right there by the highway and get to South Bend and all these different places. And Culver's obviously not far from that. But I could see that mix definitely changing. And, you know, to go from 50/50 to 60/40 is a big jump. But I could see that definitely happening of, of people outside moving in at a higher rate of that people already living in Marshall County moving to this new housing. Which would be good, I think. Always nice to draw in new dollars as opposed to just moving the dollars around.
What are we looking at? Or Jenny, maybe you can, both of you can comment. What are we looking at as far as infrastructure costs?
I don't think we really know what that is yet. I mean, they may have a good idea of that, but.
Alan's all already right at that 4 million, 4.5 million dollar number. When you consider everything from, I mean, that's moving dirt, that's putting in sidewalks, streetlights, water, stormwater, storm sewer, all that stuff. You're right in that 4 to 4.5 million is what he's preparing for.
For the development?
Correct.
But what about our other obligation of running the sewer and the water out there?
That would be included to stretch it out to, that would be the.
He's including utilities and.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the, the public service would obviously be donated back to the city. So once it's all completed, then it would be our expectation to turn. Are the only streets that we really can maintain ownership of are the ones that have on-street parking. But it would be our expectation to turn that over to the city after it's all completed and do as-bills and get everything squared away with the or the TRC and all that. So everybody would know where the cost. And I know you guys have to do that analysis of what's it cost to care for that road moving on. And in every community we've gone to, we've always built to the, the local specs. At the moment. Or reach an agreement on doing something different that made sense to change the specs because of the type of development it is that's maybe unique. And a little bit of ways on things that's best for us if we can do all the work. I mean, we can do all the taps, you know, we get frustrated in some communities where we have to wait for some other company to come and do the taps. Bill and all the excavation companies trained and certified to be able to do from moving dirt to putting in all infrastructure and tapping everything and getting it all squared away. So the less we have to deal with anybody else, the faster we can move. And oftentimes, the cheaper it is. We were talking with the city to extend the sewer out, we were fine with them bidding it out if they wanted us to bid it, we could. But oftentimes, we find that we're unable to provide that service at a lower cost because we're generating, we're motivated by the end product, not the, not the excavation. An excavation company only makes money on moving the dirt or putting in the infrastructure. While Alan and Chris aren't motivated by that money, they're motivated by the development at the end. So they're willing to take less down to almost nothing so that they can, you know, just cover their cost to put it in to get to whatever that development is. So and already having the equipment and the team on site oftentimes can just be very beneficial to everybody. But we're happy to have it bid out on certain parts of that project where it was.
We've talked about also if they're doing the work of the utilities, that we could still have our own inspection. We've talked about also if they're doing the work of the utilities, that we could still have our own inspection. So where Bob could be serve as the inspector or we could hire a third-party inspector if we wanted to.
Right.
We've we've connected Bob with their utility, I don't know what you wanna call it, yeah.
Bob and Bill are familiar, they've worked together before, so they're.
And it's kind of one of our thoughts was we'd want it done per, you know, the size pipe we would want, that sort of stuff. And we're used to working with Midwestern on specs and that sort of thing, so we kind of wanted to have some. Control of inspecting along the way, if you will.
We're familiar with that, you know, compaction and and all kinds of different things. Surface, all that, we're we're more than familiar working with any different communities that have different. Do that and it's hard motivated by us to be able to turn it over at the end, so we want you guys happy with it. And frankly, you know, Alan and Chris and the developers are gonna have ownership of apartments and houses and the last thing they want is the roads falling. So they're gonna build it to high quality because they're gonna continue to own it, so. No desire whatsoever to short that at all, we want it done right and maintained for a long time, so. That's always quality work that's done, so.
It's a storm storm grain system going to be going to the.
It'd go to that water retention areas, yeah, yeah, so we said to do some analysis with the engineers and determine where that water goes. When we looked at it, it kind of looked like it just percolates down and there's no, those areas don't have any area where it goes to and. Water, I'm pretty sure even in Culver doesn't go uphill, so when we looked at it, it looks like it just stays there.
That would be just for a lot.
Continue to go downhill and I think it just percolates into the ground there probably sandy soils. Analysis.
Do you happen to know the Centennial Crossroads project was subject to the complete streets?
Yes, yes, actually, I was the chair for the Complete Streets Board in Plymouth. So I held or was the chair of the committee that developed that project. Yeah, so so I made sure that we complied with all those requirements and, yeah, it's got sidewalks all the way through. There are no bike lanes or anything, but everything, you know, you kind of have to. You have to look at that, see if that's possibility and considering the PUD where it is and the amount of housing that was required. In order for the development to to go, we do have the main street that runs back there, even to Alan's dismay, is a feeder street. So it's a really wide street, so you are gonna have a lot of ability to. Travel that road to some degree in safety with the width of it. It's expensive to do that, but it kind of, the community kind of wanted that wider road just to base upon that with the multifamily in the back. And so we were able to put that in, but we changed a little bit of the surface. Because with being a feeder street, it had to be a certain amount of thickness because of the traffic there was gonna get, and we said, it's not gonna get that traffic, so we were able to adjust the.
We do have a complete streets policy now.
Yeah, is it, I would imagine that.
I think we modeled after Plymouth, like, we were involved with MACOG with it.
Right.
So it's very similar to what you're seeing on Plymouth.
I think the Plymouth one we got was like ninety-seven or a hundred, ninety-eight or hundred percent. Review from MACOG to send back, we tried to just check all the boxes and and get everything done. So I think we had a very compliant program with MACOG and so if yours is kind of following that same line.
Basically preceded that, but it's it's similar.
Yes, okay, so I don't think that that would be a concern at all for. If you have a board that would review, we're happy to send the the prints off.
That was one of the reasons we were asking when you were describing the Tamara project, putting a sidewalk on the outside. Cause our trail will end down there at the cemetery and then cross over to that property.
Yeah.
And then, of course, now this housing development will be across from our trail that runs all the way to the south end.
Yeah, and in Centennial.
Connecting, it'll be nice.
In Centennial Plymouth has the Greenway Trail, we're looking at extending, you know. As council, I'm always watching out for my clients' liability issues, so I tried to extend it off of their parent property of our, you know, the Centennial property. But it just makes sense to cross at the stop sign where it's gonna be an extend down in the front of the development, so. You know, we're used to working with municipalities and making sure that those trails that are so popular for cities to have. We don't wanna be an impediment to that at all, we wanna be a partner in that. Did I miss anything, Mr. McGee?
Nope.
Sounds good, right? Can't wait.
Just out of curiosity, wait, from a design standpoint, you know, that whole area you've kind of cleared nicely and made a little path back toward that pond. Is that gonna kind of stick around? I love that aspect of the property, it's on the north end.
This is kind of the wooded area that runs along the north and goes back to the pond.
Yeah, so that's basically the water retention kind of area, so if anything, we're looking at building those, you know. Alan's designing this townhouse duplex, so from the road to look out at that, yeah, so you'd have some nice. Housing that's there that would be the back for the decks and things, so if you were driving there along, you know, the evil check road there. You'd see that development kind of extending around, but all that waterway would stay there, so.
I was picturing a crosswalk on the trail side of South Main. Over to the housing development into that tree line that you cleared, just really pretty right there and. It would connect nicely to the trail where you could conceivably come out of the housing development down that little. Tree-lined pathway, cross the street onto the trail and take a walk through town or down toward the cemetery.
Yeah. That and and Al's incorporated, invested in putting in amenities for other properties. But this one, he doesn't feel he needs to do a clubhouse, but I think that's something the engineers haven't looked at real hard yet. If it's, if it can be incorporated, I'd love to see it.
Yeah. You know, just to kind of. Work off of that, I mean, and and the consideration of all those little types of projects. We've got an area in Centennial that is about ten acres and only about two acres really developable. And to get to it, you have to have a bridge or buy a road off of Michigan, which isn't financially feasible. And so he's looking at turning that into what's called an arboretum, which is an environmental educational area. With a walkway that goes around the whole thing and donating that back to the Parks Department. You know, it has that pathway, so it's kind of drawing people in, so it's kind of the same idea here of, you know, we want to. We wanna work with the communities and develop these walkways and things, I'm on the other side going, you don't wanna bring people into the development that don't live there, you know, kind of, that's a concern, but. That's what, you know, in Peru, they have a, it's the development in Peru is right on the Wabash River. And they've got a walking trail that runs right along the Wabash that's gonna butt up to the development and people love it. Personally, I wouldn't like it at all to have people walk into my backyard, that's just me, having little kids, I just wouldn't like them. They are super excited about having the ability to walk out their backyard onto the walking trail and walk to whatever other town if they wanted to. So, you know, that's a big draw for a lot of people and it could be here. For people moving in and being able to walk and then get down to, I think it probably runs all the way down to the coffee shop, stuff around to the. The academy and everything.
Yeah, we we start in the park, come out down here on off of Washington. And it comes this way and goes south, heads down Plymouth Street and then comes back up to Maine and down toward the cemetery. Across the street from the Tamara Development and then across the street from that will be the housing development, so. And where we're talking about near the water plant end of his development. He's cleared sort of the, an area through the tree line where you can walk back toward the pond.
Yeah.
It's just really pretty back there and I, you can see like what, when our trail is done, crossing the street over and being able to walk back there. If you wanted to go sit by the pond or something, or someone in the housing development wants to go for a nice long hike. They can come right across the street, hit the trail and come all the way back up to the sun through the park.
Yeah.
And then eventually it'll even go north out of our park on Academy property, so you'll be able to make like a three-mile loop.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, I mean, all that stuff is workable and just able to be developed in with the engineers as they kind of put things together and.
We just like the idea of connecting the the new asset of the development to trail asset, yeah.
Yeah.
So people can, you know, hop on a bike, go shop or get their coffee or take a walk.
Alan's got prep pro- pet projects like that and like every development, so, you know, doing, now he wants to develop some piers that stick out off of the Wabash. So that people can sit out fish or whatever it might be and, you know, that's technically on park property, so it's just a benefit to the development, it's a benefit to the community. All those little things he's very involved with and and open to.
Yeah, I've been listening to, I live in Maplewood.
Okay, so you're aware.
Yeah, so fully aware of of the kinds of places that are there, mine has a full basement and so on and some of them don't and. And different kinds, but, and of course, there's a lot of, a lot of, well, a number of Academy families that have purchased. That are there for a period of time and then then sell that kind of.
Just been amazing to watch that development and how it's changed financially over a period of time, very quickly, I mean.
Right.
Houses selling in short term for such significant increases, yeah, asset.
That's making me think.
Downsized, yeah. Bill, do you have any questions?
I do have one question, how big is Centennial Park acreage wise compared to?
It was thirty-four acres.
Okay.
Of development. Now, a lot of that, there's some of that acreage is gonna be, I think, taken up by the natural topography and. You know, I think you're probably in Centennial, you only have four or five acres of water retention area. Here, you're not gonna have any, maybe much more water retention area, but it doesn't make sense to build a house way down low because of the natural. So you may have sixty-six acres of total land that have fifty-five or fifty-six acres of developable land. So it's not necessarily all water retention, it's just the topography doesn't really lean towards building a house that way out all by itself or something. That's the engineers are kind of putting that all together of what the total developable area is. Is that, do you think that's about right?
Yeah, there's, there's about ten, it's in pond. Right now, the deal that I looked at, it's it's kind of a drop-off from, I think, seven hundred and fifty.
Thirty-two.
Seven thirty-two, yeah, so you you can see a pretty steep drop-off, so it provides for good water flow. To the lower areas and the natural pond.
But not water flow area you wouldn't wanna build and kind of things, that's that ten acres that may be in that undevelopable area.
And that's what Jenny was saying, there's a path through the woods, go back to pond. And I'm gonna defer, of course, to the developer, I don't know what to do, but if he can incorporate it. Yeah, into an amenity, I think it'd be very enjoyable.
Since there aren't any questions from the boards, are there any questions from the? Citizens?
Well, I just have a couple of comments, I appreciate that discussion around the added natural amenities. We've done a number of surveys and talked to a lot of people in Culver, even as part of our Culver. I'm on the Holiday Place Committee along with Greg and the Housing Committee, and one of the things we've been hearing is the needs for more year-round. Activities, even the natural ones that can be easily incorporated would be really appealing even for those who don't live. I don't think people would freak out too much if somebody were coming in and.
Yeah. But one of the things in Centennial, maybe to couch some of those statements is you're right on top of the local park. So you got a lot of people just in the park and then you say you don't just invite everybody in because you just draw in. Here, you're not on the, you know, connected to a local park where people are just, you know, anyways.
Right, they have to be intentional.
Come in there, yeah.
I guess the only other thing I would say is, it sounds like you're gonna do a fair amount of community outreach, which is great. Idea, so I think what you will hear from the community outreach is just that, that they really wanna make sure. Agree that they can, what you said, you know, with the developers, et cetera, will determine that, that is certainly, I hope.
Yeah, it's always, it's always our desire to be a good neighbor because we're gonna be there for a long period of time, so it doesn't make any sense to build something. Community's not happy with, it's just better for everybody if we're all on the same page and build something that's needed and. You know, was beneficial because it becomes beneficial to everybody, so that's the intent.
Burke, if you guys do wanna do any kind of surveying or public input type of session, we can help arrange that for you. And put stuff out for you if you want, like a reach out on TGL, which is a massive email list. Or through our social media or something if you want, want responses to anything like that.
And that's, you know, we'll work with whatever Alan and Chris kinda wants and their desires as far as input, I I know that they've really got the system put in place. And we work closely with Peru and and their committees that they had, we had to go through a process to be chosen as a developer in Peru. And so they had committees and they had input that they wanted and with all those, we, you know, we do have some metrics that we have to meet in terms of costs. You know, that, you know, people come with some great ideas until they know what it costs, but they say, well, you know. You know, a little bit of an upgrade, they say, yeah, see, that's apartment, so that upgrade has to be done every year when you rent it again. So it's not just the one time that you, you know, put it into a house, you gotta put that floor down. You know, maybe every two years, every three years, whatever it might be, so that's financially not feasible to work for an apartment. So, you know, the downtown Chicago apartment is a little bit different than, and sometimes people get that idea of, I like that stuff and. So we kind of have to work together and say, let's find a middle ground of not maybe this old oak cabinet, but painted cabinet that looks like nice. But is also affordable, so we worked pretty closely with them to develop.
Yeah, I had a question, I'm, John, by the way, I'm on the Plan Commission and.
Okay.
Housing stuff committee, what, I apologize, like, what's your time frame?
Alan's prepared for, you know, a twelve-month, a thirty-six-month presence kind of on whatever the the community is looking to do. As far as participation and being able to develop out the infrastructure for everything, the more participation, the more infrastructure we can build. The more space for housing and different private parts of projects we can build in phase one, we want phase one to be as big as possible. We've not found locally that we've had overbuilt the demand based upon the development, so. I'm concerned about overbuilding the demand. We now have, or we we are beginning, we're finishing Centennial Crossing, we're beginning the Peru project, it's gonna be over the next eighteen months. And that development. Will will have the ability to start moving dirt probably in the next eight to twelve months. Oh, you know, we, again, we do from all of the excavation through the complete building, so. You could see excavation out here in the next eight to twelve months, eighteen months maybe. Depending upon the process of putting all this information and stuff together, you know, you're, there's less and less engineers and more and more need for them. So, you know, depends on the engineers against them all lined up and, but, you know, I could say moving dirt and and everybody being comfortable in the next. You know, between six to eighteen months.
You see any potential problems getting materials because of all we've been through in the last couple of years, things like this, once you get started and so on?
We already have enough lumber to build the Peru project. And Alan purchases outs enough ahead in early, end of the year, beginning of the year. Does a great job of getting out ahead of the needs for a lot of those materials. What we do end up lagging behind on is the engineering stuff as far as the infrastructure, the the materials for. Storm sewer and those types of things because the engineers have to design those, they have to be approved and then you have to send them out, you can't, can't just go buy a bunch of. Of those things, so many of the long runs as far as ductile iron and those types of things we can get. But the the stuff that has to be manufactured, we do run into some delays there, but if we can get out ahead of it. And we get the engineering all done, then we can submit that order and be off to the races as soon as all that stuff comes in. I think that they're looking at six to eight weeks delays right now on a lot of that stuff. So it's a while, but it's not, you know, months and months, there are still the moment here, so. They can turn it around pretty quickly.
I think one thing we haven't mentioned is that we've been talking about potentially. You can do housing projects. I think one thing we haven't mentioned is that we've been talking about potentially, um, you can do housing projects with the ready grant process. So, um, if there is, uh, money that would come from the town or CRC for this project, that would serve as a match on the ready project. So the way that'll work is we would, we'd want to get at least a resolution or something written that says, um, whichever organization likely CRC. Would commit X amount of dollars capped at whatever for the ready grant application. Those grant applications are going to happen rather quickly once the IEDC finally has an agreement with South Bend, Alcart region. So, and the next month or two, I think council and CRC needs to sit down and look at your financial picture. And decide what you can afford or how much you want to invest in ready projects. Um, I know the council's already committed to Blue Zones, which is a countywide project and it's a twenty-five thousand dollar a year commitment. The, the beauty of if we're, if we are as a redevelopment commission going to invest in this housing project, we might as well use that investment as a grant match toward ready. Because it could provide up to twenty percent of the total project cost, so four and a half million is the infrastructure cost, then maybe the whole development is. I don't know, ten, fifteen million.
Ten, fifteen million, yeah.
So ready, if, if we were putting up a certain amount from redevelopment, we can get a certain amount from ready. And that might mean there's less of an investment on the town side if we can get the ready funds. You know, they're saying that housing being such a high priority in our region will get some priority with the ready grant dollars. So it would make sense for us to submit any housing development project that we're willing to invest in on our side. Uh, but again, you have to have that match.
Is there a time limit on those? For the project to be finished?
The money that you receive through ready will have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-five. So, and if it's spent on infrastructure and utilities, it would be upfront.
You know, suck up a lot of that, I mean, that's, uh, depending upon, you know, hopefully we don't be, with anything, there's so many unknowables. Um, right now, I mean, assuming that we have no engineering issues or soil issues and those types of things, everything moves on smoothly, then you're looking at. A four million, four point five million dollar cost in infrastructure. You know, Peru, we ran into some soil issues right along the Wabash River, and so we've got another million dollars and, uh, specialized peers that we have to put in to support the buildings based upon the soils that they have. So, uh, we don't expect anything like that here because we're not on the Wabash River, uh, we assume that it's going to be like all the other soils in, in Color or Marshall County. And so we, we're not concerned about that at all, but these numbers, those are unknowables at this point in time, but know that. You know, using those funds and putting that into the developments only helps to maintain or reduce the cost of the units. You know, that, that money is returned to the, the community in lower rents and those types of things because the market and the cost to develop is so much lower. So that's how you're able to turn around those, or a portion of how you're able to turn around developments for sixty-nine dollars a square foot. If you participate.
Thank you. So the ten to fifteen million total project cost includes the four to four and a half or?
No, that's the total, that, yeah, that doesn't take it off, but that's the total development, uh, capital investment type, I don't know, number.
And then the four.
Oh, the four and a half would come out of that.
Okay.
So we would go to pay for part of that ten to fifteen million dollars.
Okay.
Would go, yeah, towards that.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of the things that, um, Phil and Jim are trying to work out because to annex this whole.
Be in town.
Yeah, we don't need to do the annexation on ways.
You have to annex.
Tamarex has to be annexed, but we have to have a development agreement with the developer to do any kind of bond or expenditure agreement, whichever one it would be. So we need to get our heads around commitments and costs and that sort of stuff.
Right.
But ready, um, even though we have to do a lot with the TIF, there's a lot of legal paperwork that's going to be involved with creating that new TIF district. There's going to be some paperwork involved with applying for a ready grant, doing a development agreement, expenditure agreement, et cetera. With ready, it doesn't necessarily all have to be done before that application, we're not going to have to rush to get it done by June because you and I would be freaked out in that scenario. But we will have to have a plan in place to show what the steps are going to be toward that housing project and what commitments. And they're going to make on their end, that sort of stuff. So.
And I, I kind of wanted to couch that too, that four million is in developing thirty-some, forty acres worth of development. If you don't, you know, the city said, well, we'll do five hundred thousand, then that would do five acres, uh, you know, the, so that it's not four million no matter what, it's that. That four million, if we're developing into this full, uh, putting in the infrastructure for the full. Carsels, that's where you get to that number, uh, just because imagine a road and sidewalks and street lights to cover sixty acres worth of, fifty-five acres worth of real estate, it gets. It's pretty expensive, so that's, that's where that full top number comes from.
About a hundred thousand an acre then, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just depending on what layout, but that's kind of where Centennial fell out and, uh, looking at this is maybe not. Centennial was kind of a unique design, this is a lot more square, uh, so maybe a little bit easier to design, uh, and not have, you know, wasted space or anything that. Some areas in Centennial, the intersections got pretty wide because you had a curved road to match the development type areas, you had some expanded, uh, areas and stuff, so. Uh, plus the storm sewer system up there was immense, uh, there's structures that you can walk through, uh, that's that big, so. Which was not pleasing to Alan, but, uh, so it had to be done, uh, to get it done, so here we shouldn't have near that type of issue because the water flows easily to the. Different directions and there's more than enough space there to hold it, so.
Burke, the four or four and a half is for phase one.
Is there anyone online?
We're hoping that it would be, uh, we would have only one phase, a complete build out altogether is the idea.
Go that total.
Right, yeah, so it's like Centennial, we had, we did have, we had two phases, we did two bonds in Centennial, but we had them all passed at the fir, at the one meeting. So when phase two came up, which there was no stoppage in building, we just processed, we just recently completed that, we just processed phase two bond, didn't have to go back to the council or anybody, they'd already approved it. It was just a paperwork process, so, but, you know, there's still an added fifty thousand dollars in professional fees to finish that. If we get an agreement to do the whole thing, then we don't have to have phase one and phase two, even though nobody could tell the difference, um, if we get an agreement to do it all. Alan will commit, I mean, Alan, this is his backyard, he's happy to commit his guys right here in this area for the next twelve to thirty-six months, uh, once we get started.
Okay.
After they build it all out.
Well, at this time, I'd, I'd also like to see if there's anyone online that has any questions and if so, they can speak up. Give us their name. Anybody? Okay.
We'll get lots of views on YouTube later, I'm sure.
Yeah, right.
When do you, when do you plan to make public this project?
Well, I don't know, um, necessarily that there's any desire to keep it, uh, from being public, um, but I think that if there, there's nothing slowing Alan down. Other than the, the community's desire to participate and see it move forward, so, uh, what I think that, uh, public buzz will really get going is when they see. Machinery out there.
When, when would you start actually selling?
Uh, as far as, uh, selling units, I mean, I would not foresee, um, obviously we wouldn't sell anything for a significant occupancy, it would be hard to imagine a CMO. Before maybe twenty-four months.
Perhaps, when will you start taking orders?
Orders, yeah.
Not closing.
Yeah, absolutely, a- as we developed, uh, so, as we finished the design in Centennial and got the PUD approval, we had, uh, a few individuals that were, uh, involved with the purchasing process where they picked their. Lot, and it, this was all somewhat spec in that we picked the house for the location because that's part of the PUD process. So they came in and saw the models and said, well, I want to be on this row and I like that model best, and then they began the, the process of semi, uh, customizing the house. And that process started right around the PUD approval, so I wouldn't imagine really working with anybody, uh, before, you know, six months or so after we get the process started. Because that allows the PUD approvals and design and all that, so I wouldn't see working with customers, uh, for another eighteen months or so, twelve to eighteen months. Just because there's so much leading up to that, and, uh, as you know, you get too many cooks in the kitchen, uh, you know, say, well, I want this house there, I want this. I don't think that's going to be necessarily, uh, the process, it'll be working through and picking what works for the community and designing it all out on the, on the flat. And then having people come in, as they did in Centennial, and say, I like this area, that's the model in the area that I like, now let's design it out, uh, to some degree.
Well, Jenny, I think the first thing we need to do is, like you said, sit down with CRC and council and work out some numbers.
And if the ready grants there, that's super helpful, uh, to everything and we're happy that.
It's in together, but I mean.
Yeah.
That, that seems to be step one.
Yeah, and I think we need definitely to have, um, more input from Phil and potentially Baker Tilly. So the first step for CRC is to approve, going through this process again with Baker Tilly and Phil, because Baker Tilly will also be able to work. With the developers to determine the assessed value of this PUD and what, what that will generate in terms of TIF dollars because.
Right.
CRC needs an idea of what it's going to generate to be able to see if they can afford X percentage over the years.
Know how much taxes will be coming in.
Yeah.
Figure out how much.
So.
And we worked with Baker Tilly on both the bond side and the conditional expenditure, so we're familiar with them on both types of deals.
I think pulling them in now and having, uh, CRC or. Prove of, you know, launching a, some work with both those organizations because we can't really. View accurate information without their involvement.
Yeah, perhaps they could, uh, take the rudimentary dashboard and, um, you know, develop it into something that's more accurate.
What they require from us a lot of times is square footages and those types of things, and on a lot of our developments, the square footage is easily to determine. It's easy to determine because it's something we've built before, so we already know what the square footage is of this apartment building and the scene of building and those types of things, so they can plug that into their program pretty quickly.
How close to that stage are you at with your engineering and design?
Well, we had a design put together and Alan's kind of, now that she's kind of see how things lay out, kind of maneuvers and stuff around, so we're getting close. We're going to have to sit down with Mr. Me and get everything laid out exactly as we all like, uh, but, uh. I would say, you know, over the next thirty to forty-five days, probably have a pretty solid design, um, that we would say, okay, let's, let's start to run with this and. Some little changes may come about, uh, as we go through the process of finalizing, but, you know, roads get straightened out or bent a little bit, or. But for the most part, uh, once we get to that design, that'll be pretty solid going forward.
Yeah, because I'm wondering too, like, if Baker Tilly took the minimum. Level of assessed value, like, you know, worked from, I don't want to call it worst case scenario, but the lowest number that would potentially be generated. Versus the highest number or something in between is going to be the number, but.
Perhaps it's a conservative scenario.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so take, I'm talking, I'm facing him because I know he's an expert. But I guess that's the thing, I know how quickly that grant application will be due and how slowly this moves. But to know at least the conservative number that you guys would be able to look at. Is probably an ideal way to approach it without knowing exact number for forty-five days or sixty days or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have, you know, with engineers now, and we've already gotten one back, we're sending a revision, uh, so the change is a lot quicker than the original development, so. That, I'm hopeful she'll be able to get back pretty quick.
Okay.
Sally, do you think we need to have a special meeting? Before our next meeting?
That might be a good possibility, but if part of it would depend on what?
Your next meeting is April.
Yeah, April nineteenth. Eighteenth through nineteenth.
Eighteenth is Monday. I think we'll be okay because that would give, I mean, that, yours only talking about three weeks from today.
Okay.
So I think, I think, we'll see how far along you are by that date, but in the meantime, it gives me time to get a proposal from Baker Tilly and from Phil. Because that's step one, I think, is just to say we're willing to output some funds to, to work on this. Uh, because I don't want to, Phil, Phil and Jim Clevinger have already met with Burke on some of this and I want to make sure that. We're willing to pay for the attorney time and the Baker Tilly time, um, that'll be, that can be on the next agenda and then we'll get further down the road. And maybe by the time their May meeting rolls around, you guys will be closer to an accurate number.
I'm sorry, the whole stuff.
For us to work with.
Yeah.
And the, uh, ready grant, you're expecting those to be due in June or July?
Yeah, they, well, the date kind of seems to shift, but South Bend, Alcart region is still waiting on a contract from the IEDC. Which will have the requirements, then they'll roll those out to the region and those are, are expected out by the end of this month. I don't know if you're on track with that.
I was just going to ask about, you know, since a ready grant's funded through a ARCA funds, there's been some talk about federal guidelines. And I didn't know if as a contractor, you guys were okay with that, I know you'd have to meet like vacant Davis wages and things of that nature.
That's an analysis we'd have to get into, we haven't even begun to kind of approach, um.
I know not all contractors, like, stick on federal projects.
Right, right, I, I think that Alan and Christopher, over the years, kind of avoided those types of projects from the standpoint of, uh, of red tape. And, you know, they've just developed such a good relationship with their subs, uh, you know, the subs get paid every other Friday, they're always busy, they always get paid, they always go looking and praying. So they're really somewhat captive subs and that they just keep doing the work and we keep pouring foundations, uh, and so they're, they're happy or, um. Alan and Chris start the business running the electrical company or HVAC company, so it's either or, uh, and so that's kind of the model they put together, they're happy with and, and everybody seems to be pretty happy, so.
Yeah, we don't know how they're going to go about procurement if they are, because usually with federal dollars, you have to go through procurement, Davis vacant wages, as Greg was saying, and then. Um, there's also, this is different than regional cities from what we're told, although there, there was talk there would be a workaround, but. With regional cities, it came to the developer as a grant, they're saying that because this is an ARCA funding and federal funding, it, there would be tax implications. So we're just not sure if there's going to be a workaround for that for the developer, because no one can conceive of anyone wanting to do one of these if it's.
It's such a big tax on.
Yeah. Yeah, and what's that look like and, and therefore does the level of dollars go up on the grant amount, you know, that, we just don't know, so. That's one reason I haven't wanted to have the conversation yet about ready because we're just like, needles waiting to see what they're going to do.
Alan just shivered somewhere.
Well, believe me, as someone who's administered federal dollars, it makes me shiver because just the idea of it. And it, unlike, you know, with an OCR federal grant, you get eighty percent of the cost of a project, it's worth the pain, but this is twenty percent and it might not be worth the pain.
Well, that's. About that, if you don't want to get too far down that road.
Yeah.
Well, it's not a requirement for sure, I mean, we've done every project so far up to now without it, uh, it's a huge benefit, uh, if it's an option that's. Uh, able to be considered, um, but I know that, uh, tax management is a large portion of our development process because it's. Keeps the money where it needs to be, um, and so.
And Davis Bacon would certainly change the cost of your project. So that 20% might not be worth what you have to pay in wages.
20% get gobbled up in wages and you have taxes.
Yep, yeah.
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 So we'll, we'll keep you in the loop. But that's one reason I just have not
Yeah.
been pounding on the doors of the two
Right.
who are interested in doing a development in town. I just don't know that.
There's always a catch.
Yeah, yeah. With, with some of the OCRE projects, you know, the catch is worth it, but this one we we just don't know.
Well, that's always, uh, true to maintain control of it. That's what Alan and Chris have done is to maintain control of the cost by owning it. And so, uh, that could continue to work for sure.
Well, if they're.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, very happy to touch down and, yeah.
Thank you. As I was going to say, if there are no more questions, I think we can close this.
On model, if there are. Let's toward the capital expenditure model because of the used cost of that model and making decisions as we go forward. Be interesting to get, I think, of course, you get that, that direction from.
Phil and Jim have, have a good understanding of that now. That was one of the things they talked with Burke about because when Sally and myself and this one, we went up to talk to Phil in South Bend, that was sort of a question for him was why the expenditure agreement versus a bond? Because, you know, they've
Bond costs.
In Indiana, you're, we've been doing bonds forever, but this is a relatively newer thing to a lot of these firms. Um, but yeah, they're definitely kind of on top of that as a and make sure we understand it first.
You know, obviously my fees are part of that bond process. It's a very small fraction. That bond process was my piece. Um, so the other portion of that discussion is also when you're talking to bond counsel about ways of reducing their fee, uh, they, you know, they kind of say, well, wait a second. So you want me to do a lot of work for less money? So, you know, they kind of, uh, you know, I wish I picked up on quickly, uh, when speaking with Phil. Uh, and I say, you know, with all due respect, all we're trying to do is bring housing to rural Indiana. Uh, and any way we can do that helps us to, you know, reduce the cost of those rents and, uh, you know, it's no disrespect to you. It's just that's a, a method we found, uh, to help shave, you know, a hundred and some thousand dollars off. And I can't rent the bond, you know, I can't, you know, I can only rent the apartment, uh, that's a, generated at the end. So I can't rent the roads. I can't rent the streetlights. Uh, those are all just costs. Use those costs, uh, any way we can, then that helps with, uh, maintaining those rents. And that's what leads to, you know, 99% occupancy rates, um, across Alan and Chris's 2,000 some units. I mean, they're, they're full because they're at or, you know, uh, market rate or a little bit below, uh, for those senior units. So that's what generates that occupancy rate. It's better to be 99% full at a little bit lower rate than it is to be 60% full at a rate that can't be afforded.
Thank you very much for, yeah, the explanation. I think we pretty much understand what he's talking about. And what the pride, more than we, yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we don't really have any.